Laura, did anyone show up at the building?
And Courtney's over there, she'll hear someone.
The Piscataway Township Planning Board meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Korea News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Notice sent to the Korea News and the Star Ledger. Ms. Buckley, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Wallace, I hear Councilwoman Cahill.
Here.
Ms. Corcoran.
Here.
Ms. Saunders.
Here.
Reverend Kenny.
Here.
Oh, Mr. Atkins is not going to be here today. Mr. Foster. He should be showing up any moment. Mr. Ahmed.
Yes, here.
And Madam Chair.
Here. Mr. Barlow, would you read the open public meeting notice?
Certainly, Madam Chair. This meeting is being held in the virtual platform in keeping with the Department of Community Affairs guidelines. And it's appropriate to go forward in this fashion.
Could we all uniformly recite the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay. Will they be swearing in of the professionals? Do we have anyone testifying tonight?
Yeah, we're gonna have Mr. Clark and it's going to be testifying so we could swear him in.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give you the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Barlow?
Yes, Madam Chair. Number 1123 PB 18, the Rockefeller Group Development for Block 3702 Lot 1.0210 Normandy Drive. They had an issue where they their notice improperly indicated that the meeting would also be held in person. And they figured out their error and they immediately sent out a new notice. But people got both notices and we know it confused people because they actually called Laura to indicate, you know, that they were going to show up for the meeting. So out of abundance of caution, I spoke to Mr. Clarkin, the Assistant Borough Attorney, and we both indicated to Rockefeller that they would need to renotice properly to avoid any confusion. And they will do so for the next meeting. So that is the only change to the agenda. If you're here for Rockefeller Group, it will be postponed until September 13th and you will get a new notice. That's the only change.
May I have a motion to pay the bills?
Uh, this is Carol Saunders. I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second. I'll second that, Madam Chair. Councilwoman Cahill.
Mm-hmm. Roll call.
Councilwoman Cahill.
Yeah.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Item number eight, adoption of resolution to memorialize action taken on July 12, 2023. Ms. Saunders?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize application for extension of time for 22 PB 20 slash 21.
Uh, Ms. Saunders, the agenda was revised that was adopted at the last meeting, so please skip that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Get to the new one. Okay, alright.
Yeah, so the second one, the IPT.
Okay, the I've, uh, Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize IPT Kingsbridge Business Center Urban Renewal, which seeks relief from previously approved condition, application 22 PB dash zero eight.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I second it.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize the application number 23 PB dash zero nine slash 10B for 1407 Stilton Road LLC preliminary and final site plan with both variants.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I second it.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Item number nine, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 13th, July 12th rather, 2023.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to adopt the minutes from the regular meeting of July 12, 2023.
Second, do I have a second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Item number 10, discussion to determine whether the property designated as Block 3401, Lot 12.02, 43.01, and 4701.
Madam Chair, can the record just show that Mr. Foster is at the meeting?
Uh, thank you. Record is next. Mm-hmm. And the other series of number at Brook Avenue and 20 and 1016 Linear, no, and Claussen Avenue. That's up for discussion. Mr. Clarkin?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. I will share my screen so we can walk through the report. Alright, so yeah, this is an area in need of redevelopment study that I put together for the area that I'm kind of calling Claussen Street and Bakeland Avenue. It's a bit larger than those streets, but so just for the record, the study area is defined as Block 3401 Lots 12.02, 43.01, 47.01. Block 3402 Lot 13, Block 3403 Lots 1.01, 2.01, 5.01, and 72.01. Then you have Block 3404 Lots 29.1, 45.01, 47.01, 56.01, 59.01, 62.01, 66.01, and 71.01. And then in addition, you have about 1,016 linear feet of Claussen Street, 955 linear feet of Brook Avenue, and just shy of 114 feet of Field Avenue that are intended to be vacated and are included in the study area. Okay, so that is the study area. We hopefully won't see all those lot numbers again. I did go to the site on June 12th, uh, this, so just a couple months ago. And I will go through my findings, so. But before I do that, there is an aerial at the end of my report if you want to follow along, but I'm just gonna kind of go through the description of the area. So all those lot numbers amounts to 16 lots and portions of three municipal streets, some paved, some not. The study area is in the northern area of the township, very near to the bor- uh, border of Minnosek Borough. Majority of the subject's properties are currently vacant and wooded forested areas. So 10 of those parcels have never been developed before, as far as we can tell from historical aerials, other than maybe farming pre-World War II. Um, and so those vacant parcels comprise an area of 8.05 acres. Then you have three parcels on the north side of Claussen Street that are developed, which while I'll get into more details after, and then there are another three small lots on the south side of Claussen that are also have I hesitate to use the word development, but it's being used. So those are the six lots that are more or less developed, so in total 16. Um, and then like I said, rounding that out are the three municipal roadways. Altogether, they comprise about an acre of land. So put that all together, you have 12.3 acres that are part of the study area. So some of the previous uses, particularly for, uh, which one is it, 33 Claussen, is some company called Leila Transportation, which stored school buses. So they had a very large parking lot where lots of school buses are stored. When I went on the site, the use had stopped, it had ceased, it no longer was used for that. But you can clearly tell from all their aerials that that was the main use. Other similar uses were like for rental trucks or just similar vehicle storage. 37 Claussen is an abandoned residential home and even more outdoor storage, and the same for 76 Claussen. So the study area is bound by Bakeland Avenue to the north, Claussen Street, and then a railroad track to the south, so almost forms a triangle. Where you have Possum Town Road is to your east and River Road is pretty far to the west, past 10 Normandy. Um, and the whole site is within your light industrial one zone on your zoning map. Main access is from Claussen Street. Um, and as I mentioned already, there are paper streets. So that's pretty much the background or a description of what's there today and what lots we're talking about. Um, as always, I do an environmental analysis. For all those parcels, nothing came up. There were no species of concern. There was no contaminated sites. The only thing that came up was some wetlands. A wetland survey was provided to the township that confirmed these wetland areas, so whoever the ultimate redevelopers is, it'll be their responsibility to follow NGTP requirements, but it was not a significant portion of the study area by any means. And then further, a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental analysis was performed for all the lots for the study area, and this really confirms that there are no chemicals or substances of any concern that exceed NGTP standards that we need to be worried about. So all in all, put this together with the exception of the wetlands, which could be mitigated mitigated following NGTP requirements, the the study area is developable. So some surrounding land uses, you have the Piscataway Fire School right next door. Uh, it's just north of the site. Then you also have light industrial almost all around, but to the east, there is some single-family residences across on the other side of Possum Town. And then there are some homes along Normandy Drive on the south. So it's Normandy Drive, the houses, and then the railroad tracks. So the what the houses are in between the street and the railroad tracks. And then there's also the New Journey Recycling Center over there. As I mentioned, this is in your light industrial zoning designation, so pages six through seven are really just listing what is already permitted by your current zoning standards and what those bulk standards are. Moving on to the master plan, as you very well know, your 2020 reexamination report cites, excuse me, as vacant developable land diminishes in the township, public and private redevelopment rehab and adaptive reuse efforts will continue to increase, particularly within older sections of the township. And I find this to be true, that this is definitely an older section of the township. Because one, it has older buildings that are falling, falling and fall in into disrepair, but also we looked up some township assessor records for 37 Claussen and 76 Claussen. So 37 was built in 1938 and 76 Claussen in 1836. So we can definitely conclude that this is an older area of the township that could use redevelopment. And then as always, the state planning area classification is planning area one, never changes for Piscataway because the entire township is designated as such. But it's notable because it's targeted for future growth and redevelopment by the state plan. So with that, that's some background. So now I'm gonna start going into the lots. I'm gonna start with the first six that are developed, and then I'll wrap up with the 10 vacant because they have similar criteria. So first, we're gonna go to 37 Claussen Street. Please load. Okay, here it is. So this is a two-story residential home on a smaller lot. It's in the middle of Claussen as you drive down, but as you can see from some of these photos, there are some unsafe and dilapidated conditions that were observed.
Madam Chair, are we are we supposed to be seeing a photo? Okay, there, I'm sorry, just came up for me. I apologize.
Okay. It's okay. I was having trouble as well. I think my PDF was slowly loading. But anyways, uh, so yeah, you can see some of these photos that I took of the house and they showed some unsafe dilapidated conditions. Most notably here, you can see that wire there that's knobbed into wiring, which is definitely out of code and can be dangerous. And then further, as we go through the photos, this railing here was really loose and we're luckily, we didn't pull on it because it probably would have came crashing down on top of us. So it clearly does not meet code. It's an older home. And then on this bottom photo here, you can see some staining on the carpeting, which seemed to be possibly an indication of water damage. And in that first photo, I showed that the ceiling is exposed, so it is possible that water is causing damage to the home. So if you put all these together, you know, you're gonna find conditions that are unwholesome to working conditions. And the reason I say working and not living is because it seemed that the home was used for the businesses around it rather than someone actually living there.
Looks like a murder scene.
Yeah, we we didn't stay long, so I can't tell if the red is part of the carpet and
Let's go with that.
Either way, we didn't stay in that room long. We're like, I think we've seen enough. And then these other photos are just surrounding areas of the home where you can clearly see just random vehicle and trailer storage, material storage that have bled over from past uses or just were never cleaned up. So, um, so the takeaway for this is that there's unsafe dilapidated, unwholesome working conditions in the home, improper storage of vehicles. And so this meets the A criteria. This building or the structure, I should call it, also meets the B criteria because it has a significant vacancy of over two years. No one's been using it for about, uh, as far as we can tell, for three years. And the past use has been vacated or no longer exists or is no longer continuing. So that meets the B criteria. So in summation for 37 Claussen, uh, it means the A, B, and H criteria. The all, sorry, go ahead. The the H criteria, I'll mention a couple of times, but just for simplicity, every single one of these lots meets the H criteria. It's the smart planning principles criteria. So I'll touch on that at the end. So next, we have 33 Claussen. If you were to drive down Claussen, this would be the first property on your left. So this first photo kind of gives a good indication of what it is. It's a single-story office building that has pretty wide frontage, but also has a very large parking lot, which I'll show in a moment. But while we were on site, when we went inside, we observed some substandard conditions, mostly on the tiling. As I go through these photos, so actually this top photo here is of the garage. It was an unheated garage. But this bottom photo is really where you can see the staining and it really seemed to be an indicative of water damage. So that was really a substandard condition that was found and probably due to the vacancy, although it hadn't been vacant for that long. It seemed that it already was having issues. So on top of that, we did go through the police records. And for this property, in the past 10 years, we found records of theft, burglary, and assault. Oh, actually, two notes if I can. I'm gonna skip back to 33 Claussen, the house, I forgot to mention. There were also police records there of theft and burglary, but also that never received site plan approval from this planning or zoning board for that non-residential use. Just a note. Alright, so skipping back to
The police didn't reveal any bodies were found there.
No, no bodies, just just theft and burglary and assault from the past uses. But if you put that all together, you know, this vacancy, the substandard conditions, the past police records, you know, if this these conditions stay the same, I would assume they would probably only get worse. But even in the conditions today, it meets the criteria for A, which is unwholesome working conditions, and then also the H criteria for smart planning. And then, yeah, and then this photo right here is more of a close-up of some of the tiling, and then that last photo is that huge parking lot. It extends very far, so you could almost imagine that's where that that parking lot was like chock full of school buses in its past use. And then next brings me to 76 Claussen Street, which, if I may, was probably the worst out of all the ones with structures. So this is a larger lot than the other two. It's got an older former residential home that was clearly not used for that. It was either used for a business or storage, and then also the garage, which was definitely used for storage. But also all around it were even more vehicles that were stored improperly. So we'll just kind of go through these. This is the side of the house where you can see an old storage tank. But this one on the bottom is of note. You can start to see all the materials that were stored on the porch. The door is wide open. There's even more storage in there. And if you actually look through the top story window, you can see a hole in the roof. So it's clear that no one was working or living there, and it's very clear that it's in dilapidated condition that cannot be wholesome to working or living in. I couldn't even get inside the structure because it was so stuffed with storage materials and I was a little scared frankly to go in because I wasn't sure if it was structurally sound. But the second structure here is the garage. This is another close-up of the house where you can sort of see inside. Door is wide open, windows wide open, all the elements can come in. And then this is the garage where it's just tailpipes, vehicle parts. You know, try and zoom in a little bit so you can see it better. And like this kind of stuff was just all around the property. So it really clearly was dilapidated and substandard and unsafe conditions to meet the A criteria. Further, it also meets the B criteria because of the significant vacancy of over two years. Uh, and the use no longer being continued. I think it's just somebody left and never cleaned up the site. So those are the three first ones. The next one is Block 3403 Lots 1.01, 2.01, and 7, 72.01. This is called JCR Tree Service Lots. So this is really just a use. There's no structure. It seems like they just cleared trees and started using this space. And it's actually unclear whether this is permitted and/or approved by any of your boards. So this first photo here, they really just store their vehicles, I think here, as the day is done, and also any of their materials. You can see the dumpster, barrels full of unknown substances. And I'll continue. You can see, um, they have logs that they recently cut, are just stored on site, more materials, more trucks. Um, and this, yeah. This next one is more of the same. You know, you got a shipping container. But the key here is, um, sorry, just looking at my notes. Um, it's really just dangerous storage of both machinery, but also just wood materials. So there's even more logs. Um, and this one really caught me by surprise. This is outdoor storage of wood chips. Very large amount and no container of what's of any sort. So you know, God forbid a lightning strike, a cigarette butt, you know, cause a fire very quickly and possibly endanger residences over on Norman D Street. So yeah, that was, uh, what I found to be the most dangerous set of everything I saw on these three lots. And so what this really shows evidence of is faulty detrimental use of the land that can cause real harm. And that really fits the D criteria of the in need of redevelopment's requirements. So I found that these three lots met the D criteria as well as the H criteria. Right, so those are the first six that have development and/or use. So the next are the vacant lots. So these are the 10 vacant lots. And really what this meets is what's called the C criteria because it's, they've been vacant for over 10 years. And there's no evidence that it can be developed or will be developed by private capital. So so what you're really lacking here is access to developed sections of Piscataway. It's a remote area, kind of out of the way. There's been no development, so all these together provide evidence that private capital is unlikely to develop the 10 parcels and their vacancy will continue as it has for as long as we can tell. And then there are, so part of the reason there's a lack of access is because the paper streets, some of them were never paved, but this probably also stems from, there was no reason or no desire for them to be developed. And the reason this is significant is because the unpaved portions of the street also meet the C criteria because they themselves have also been vacant for the same amount of time and had the same remoteness issues. So to be clear, just for the record, those 10 parcels plus the linear feet of Claussen, Brook Avenue, and Field Avenue meet the C criteria. And then finally, my last paragraph is something called in the law of the redevelopment law called the effectuate, making the redevelopment effective, for lack of a better word. And so so as those streets technically are not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, but their inclusion is very necessary with or without change in their condition, they're really necessary for the effective redevelopment of the area. So that we want to add those three roadways to be a part of it. And it's really so necessary because without it, it would really fragment and splinter the effective redevelopment to take place on 12 acres, especially if you're trying to do a larger building. And also the street pattern envisioned just never came to materialize, so it would not help to keep it just to further redevelopment because it wouldn't. So for those reasons, we want to include, uh, those three streets for the effective redevelopment. And I think that's everything. I just want to sum up. Oh, right, I wanted to go over the aerial. So these clearly show the vacant and wooded nature of those 10 lots and also the paper streets. So the paper streets are not labeled, but I believe Brook Avenue would be in between these. Field Avenue, I think, is technically supposed to go this way. And then this is Claussen, so part of Claussen would be vacated for this redevelopment. And then the rest of my report goes over the H criteria. As already mentioned, all those lots, all those streets fit this as, um, you know, we're close to existing light industrial uses, also Interstate 287. So that if we do redevelop it, it's promoting development in an area with existing infrastructure and matches the characteristics of this area already. So that's why it's smart planning principles. Oops. Um, let's see. Right, so in summation, it's recommended that the Township Planning Board and the Township Council determine that the study area is an area in need of redevelopment based on the fact of those 16 parcels meeting at least one criteria based on the information and evidence I've just put forth tonight. And if so, uh, it'd be possible to move forward with a redevelopment plan. So with that, I can take any questions.
Members of the board, you've heard the testimony of Mr. Clarkin on this area. Do we have any questions? From the board?
Madam Chair, it's Councilwoman Cahill. If I may. Uh, I don't know how good my connection is because I keep saying my internet is unstable. But, um, Mr. Clarkin, if you could go back to that last property that had no structure, but apparently a business was going on over there. So, um, is somebody active over there now?
It did seem that way. So when I arrived on site, it's called JCR Tree Service, I saw some individuals getting in their cars as if their workday was over. So it seems they go there, hop in their trucks, go out to whatever business they need to do for the day, come back, unload, um, and just use this the land, basically. You know, there's no house, there's no Um, and just use this, the land basically, you know, there's no house, there's no. Office building, just store the vehicles, store the equipment, store the materials and that's it. Yeah, it's rather odd.
And Councilwoman, Councilwoman Cahill, if I can, um, just to confirm.
Recording in progress.
I don't have the tax records in front of me. But I do have access to them.
Okay, I, I mean, of the, the company and it says they're based out, so. I, I mean, it's odd. And are you, and this space, just to be clear. Me this, I got this.
You're lagging, Councilwoman.
Cutting down our.
Maybe try turning off your video. It may help.
I, I will do, yeah, let me do that. Sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
So are they cutting trees down as well or are they? Or are, or is that lumber there coming from other locations?
It seems the latter, um, but due to Ms. Corcoran's comment that it's not legal and they have no approvals. I wouldn't be surprised if they cut trees down to make room for their operation.
Okay, and, um. And just to be clear, there is no activity in the, um. Structures or, or that land that you showed us previously that had structures on it, right? No business operating there now.
Correct. Oh, I will clarify that. Here, I'll start from the top just to, so this home seventy-six Claussen, definitely no one living or working in it.
I hope not.
Yeah, yeah, me too. The second one is the office building. It is vacant, but. Only for a few months. So it's not enough to meet the B criteria, just for clarification. But then. The first one I showed, which was the first home. No one living or working there, it seems.
Okay, you were out at these locations during what might be considered working, you know. Office hours, let's say.
Yeah, uh, I was a little late, I would say four PM. So it's possible someone was off for the day, but, um. There was definitely no one in the office building and no like desks, no paperwork. Yeah, nothing to indicate that there was something active going on.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions from any other board members? Okay, we can open it up to the public now. Um, Ms. Buckley, would you check and see if there's anyone in the public who would like to ask questions of Mr. Clarkin?
Laura, you're, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Buckley, would you check and see if there's any other members?
To the bottom right, you could raise your hand, you hit that button and I can unmute you if you have any questions or comments. No one, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Close to the public. Any comments from the board? At this time, we're motion.
Uh, so we're taking motions now, Madam Chair. Are, are, are questions and comments?
That period is over unless you have more questions and comments you can still.
It was Reverend Kenny. I had a comment.
Okay.
Mr. Clarkin for the sterile report. I see that just from what I see from this picture. And everything that he's taken. This land, I, I looked at that site. It's in terrible array. It's, it's actually a disgrace to our community. I'm glad that we're doing this study and. I, I indeed think this is a need for redevelopment, redevelopment in this area. Because we shouldn't have to, I don't know if we have to clean all this mess up or what we have to do. But it really needs to be re, redeveloped.
And we really can't, um, ignore the fact that it could be very dangerous if, if anybody discovered it and was to go back there for many, many reasons. Uh, do I have a motion as to what's your pleasure?
Uh, Madam Chair, I, Councilwoman Cahill, I will make a motion, uh, that we move to, um, have, um. These lots and blocks, um. Designated as an area, uh, in need of redevelopment. And Mr. Barlow, if there's anything else you need to add to that, please let me know.
That's appropriate as long as it's in keeping with Mr., um, Clarkin's report and his recommendations. That's, that's an appropriate motion. Councilwoman Cahill.
Okay, and so I would agree with the report.
Do we have a second?
Kenny, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. Would you call the role?
Councilwoman Cahill.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Ms. Saunders. Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed.
Yes.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes. We have a resolution. Ms. Saunders.
You're muted, Ms. Saunders.
Yeah, I'm not the only one.
Okay, just give me one second because I had, I'm moving to a different folder so I could keep everything in one place.
Okay.
It's coming. Okay, Madam Chairman, I'd like to, um, memorialize the resolution. For concurrence of the ordinance admitting and supplementing the revised.
No, 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 no. We're doing the area need of redevelopment.
Resolution recommending the non-condemnation area.
Okay, hold on.
You can just write it off your agenda.
Okay, um, I'd like to memorialize the, um, recommendation for, um, redevelopment for non-condemnation area. In need of redevelopment. We'll have a second. Who is that? Who did that second?
John Corcoran or Mr. Foster.
Okay, thank you.
All right, one of you down, I won't tell. Councilwoman Cahill.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Ms. Saunders.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I hope you all enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you.
Bye-bye now.
Item number twelve. Which is now eleven. Discussion to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the township of Piscataway. Amending chapter twenty-two, twenty, land subdivision and chapter. Twenty-four, site plan review.
Um, Madam Chair, this is John Corcoran. This is just an amendment to both the site plan ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. Basically exempting the township from those regulations.
Do I have a second? Do I need, is this memorialization, um, Ms.?
Yes, um, we would need a, um, unless anybody has any questions from.
Any questions or, uh, comments or questions of this resolution? Okay, um, Ms. Saunders, would you do your resolution?
Okay, um, Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize the resolution. With concurrence of ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinance of the township of Piscataway.
Do I have a second?
John Corcoran, I'll second that.
Thank you. Oh, cool.
Councilwoman Cahill.
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran.
Yes.
Ms. Saunders.
Yes.
Reverend Kenny.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed.
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
If there's no other Matt, it seems as if we've completed our agenda for tonight. So I'll take a motion for an adjournment. Madam Chairman. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Until our site plan meeting, okay.
Yeah, the workout meeting is the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yeah. Okay, enjoy everybody.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.